Hearing for the application to hear a premises licence under the Licensing Act 2003 for McDonald's Restaurants, 56 Mousehole Lane, Norwich NR7883. I have a couple of practical issues to highlight. We haven't got a fire room planned today, so if there was an alarm, make your way out of the building. And a staff or guide issued an emergency case to meet in front of the warm room. People with mobility issues should gather in the foyer on the left-hand side to keep the chamber. Toilets are far end of corridors, either side of the chamber, ladies in that direction, gentlemen in that direction. We will be having a comfort break in about two hours' time. Do we have any apologies today?
No apologies, Chair.
Thank you. And may I ask if there are any declarations of interest? Okay, I'll introduce my fellow members of licensing subcommittee. This is councillor Laws, councillor Stupley, and I'm councillor Kidman. Our legal representative is David Lance, and we also have one of his colleagues here today, Molly. And I'll ask the licensing authority to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Chair. I'm your life adviser for Norwich City Council.
Thank you. The applicant present is Simon Peters. My apologies, I have a name on my procedure, it's not my name, but the applicant is McDonald's Jones. I now ask the licensing authority to introduce their report and provide any updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. As you've already noted in the committee, the purpose of the committee today is to consider the application for a premises licence under the Licensing Act 2003 for McDonald's Restaurants at 56 Mousehole Lane, Norwich NR7883. It is recommended today that members of the licensing subcommittee determine the application for a premises licence for McDonald's Restaurants at 56 Mousehole Lane, Norwich NR7883 in accordance with the Licensing Act 2003 and subsequent regulations, the guidance issued under section 102 of the Licensing Act 2003, and Norwich City Council's statement licensing policy. Chair, a premises licence is acquired under the Licensing Act 2003 for late night refreshments. The four licensing objectives to be considered when determining the application and whether representations are: prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, prevention of public nuisance and the protection of children from harm. Norwich City Council licensing team received an application for a premises licence for McDonald's Restaurants at 56 Mousehole Lane, Norwich NR7883 on the 30th of July 2025. Application reference is twenty-five forward slash zero one three oh six forward slash PRDM. The applicant, which stated, is McDonald's Restaurant Limited. Accomplishing the application, including a planning of premises, is a tax as amended today, and it granted would allow the premises to operate following nice little activities: late-night refreshment every day and twenty-three hundred to zero five hundred. The application has been advertised in accordance with the regulations and has received an objection from the police, which was later agreed by the conditions it had already got. There were no other representations from the relevant authorities. It did however result in forty-two objections from local residents and one in support of the application. Chair, in regard to the representation, we see the subcommittee are requested to consider the application. This report contains some steps as it considers appropriate for promotion of the licensing objectives. These steps are: to grant the application under the terms and conditions applied for; to grant the application with conditions that the subcommittee considers appropriate for promotion of the licensing objectives; to refuse all or parts of the license application. Members of the subcommittee are asked to make a decision at the end of the hearing after all parties have indicated the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Just a quick word about the microphones. To speak, just raise this arch of the microphone and press the green button, the red light will show. And then when you finish speaking, just press the green button again, and I'll turn it off. I'd like now to invite the applicant to present their case. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Leo Charanides. I'm the barrister representing McDonald's. To my right is Malcolm Gadd, who is the All Things Licensing for McDonald's across the UK and Ireland. So, I'm conscious that you and your colleagues, assisted by your legal adviser and licensing officer, are quite familiar, no doubt, with licensing applications. But I'm aware and welcome members of civil society might not be as familiar with licensing or as regular at these meetings as we all are. So, if I take things a little bit slowly or raise some basic concepts, I appreciate you might know them, but I can't speak to them as well as you. And the first thing that I think is important to stress is that even though this is meant to be a friendly discussion, and by you, I hope it's a good reason, shall we? It is nonetheless part of a legal regulatory regime, and we have trinalized that discussion, which means that we must follow certain legal principles. And key to which is obviously relevance, relevance of the licensing objectives, and to establish case law. So you'll forgive me if there may well be impassioned comments that may well have human interest to them that I don't specifically address because they fall outside the remit of the legal regime. No disrespect is meant irrespective of that, but it's important that we're all lawful in our approach so that we can all come to good decisions and good representations. So, you've heard that this is an application for late-night refreshment. You need permission for a late-night refreshment, which is any hot food or drink from eleven o'clock at night until five in the morning. The rather odd thing is if we wanted to sell cold food, so orange juices, fruit, or just cold burgers, we could stay at home twenty-four seven. Because in this case, we have the benefit of a planning permission that does not restrict our hours of operation. And as you and your colleagues will know, licensing and planning are separate regimes, but nonetheless there is a significant crossover. And paragraphs fourteen-six point six four to fourteen point six seven of the section one oh two guidance, which is issued by the Home Office, which you must have regard to as a legal requirement makes that clear. But paragraph fourteen point six six also makes very clear that planning and licensing should be properly integrated and as far as possible should seek to agree mutually agreeable conditions. So even though they're separate regimes, the fact is that as a matter of planning permission, this council and indeed the Planning Inspector have looked at this site, has looked at this operation, and they have determined that as a matter of planning law, as a matter of amenity, which covers a vast range of subjects beyond the narrow scope of the licensing objectives: parking, traffic, schools, healthy eating, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is a suitable location for the operation of a twenty-four-seven quick-service restaurant. So on the one hand, the council is saying, this is a great location. So now the council is asking itself, sorry, the council will share his answer also. Do you have a question?
Yes, yeah, sorry if you don't want to thank you, Chair. The council was, the council actually refused the permission, it hasn't made that argument. It was the inspector that made that argument.
Well, that's quite correct. I did mention the inspector, the council and the inspector. The point is, the council failed to convince the inspector. It's now your decision. So as a matter of planning, the council are saying, this is suitable, unless we've gone to the High Court on it, which we haven't, so the council haven't talked to that position. So the council are saying that as a matter of amenity, this location is suitable for a twenty-four-seven night service restaurant. It tested itself, it was found to be wanting, and its position as a novel is plainly wrong. So it is suitable. So...
Sorry, yes, although we're using the term councils non-relevant, the planning committee and the licensing committee are separate committees, and there wouldn't be a crossover necessarily between those councils representing those committees. And this is purely a licensing committee hearing, and I may reiterate that later on during proceedings, but thank you for the point.
That's quite right. You can't be blind to the facts and the circumstances and the environment at which the planning position is significant. And as I say, the section one oh two guidance tells you to look at the planning and to find mutually agreeable conditions. And so the inspector, section one oh two guidance in the court, will tell you to look at this. And you can see the value of having a proper appreciation of the planning position because your committee hulk has very helpfully provided us with a plan, a core plan, and it is quite substantial, which demonstrates how and why amenity is satisfying, why this venue and this location is suitable for twenty-four-seven operation. You can see the location of the premises, the routes in and out of the premises, the facilities that support the premises, and crucially thinking about the four licensing objectives: location cameras, lights, which are important security features, acoustic fencing, which deals with public nuisance, soft planting, and planting schemes which deal with visibility, acoustic fencing, and so on. So you can see that the applicant, through its planning representations, the council through engagement with the application, albeit it was first refused, the council's further engagement with the application in front of the inspector, and when the inspector's decision has found that the conditions and the operation that form the planning permission are entirely suitable for this venue and this operation. So that gives you confidence because it has gone through a number of processes where this has been considered. And so that the planning committee to decide, well, actually, I don't agree with the council's position, with the planning inspector, and so on, is a very high evidential bar for you to me. It doesn't really speak to mutually agreeable conditions as required on the section one oh two guidance, and it certainly doesn't mean the requirement for local government consistency in decision-making. It's very odd when, like push and pull you, where the council is saying yes in one voice and no in another. And it tends to be really rather disastrous. And so you have the benefit of that position, that clear evidential position based on expert engagement from the council internally and externally. The next matter that you can of course rely on and should rely on is that you, as a licensing committee, have a number of experts that are appointed to serve you. These are your responsible authorities. They are planning, they are licensing, they are environmental health, they are the police. Paragraph nine point twelve of section one oh two guidance says to you, you should have very careful regard to the experts in your area because they are experts in their chosen field. Obviously, you should scrutinise them, that's the last sentence of the paragraph, but because they are the experts on crime disorder, if you want to learn about crime disorder, go to the police. If you want to know about antisocial behaviour, noise nuisance, or extractive violence, you go to your environmental health. Here, of course, you don't have any responsible authorities, and so that raises a very interesting question of what do you do? You might think, for example, based on your own local knowledge, that this place has got crime disorder, antisocial behaviour, and so on. What do you do in that scenario where you personally have a view that is unsupported by your responsible authorities? Well, thankfully for the three of you, the High Court has considered this scenario in a case called Foyt's, which I'm sure your legal adviser will know it up in very familiar ways. And I suspect you know it, if you've sat in many of these hearings. In that case, the police also not made representations, and they withdrew their representations. And the local magistrates in that scenario said, well, you know, we're going to rely on our own local views, our own gut instinct, and we think there are problems about crime disorder, so we're going to refuse the application. The High Court told them that was wrong, and it's quite inappropriate to do that. You must place great weight on the fact that the experts in this case, the police, environmental health, planning, and so on, had not made representations. And to elevate your views and your gut instincts above that position of the responsible authorities is to invite error and to make a bad decision. And so that is the two really key legal approaches. The other, I'll deal with this finally, I'll stop making even more weight for why lawyers are not liked by people, is paragraph fourteen point thirteen of the section one oh two guidance. And that tells us that licensing isn't the answer. It makes very clear that licensing is not the answer to general problems of crime, disorder, antisocial behaviour, concerns, and so on. It's a very, very narrow field which we can address. So quite often, there's a great deal of sympathy when civil society come along and they have many things to say, quite impassioned, as to say, many things which we may all be very sympathetic to. But it doesn't quite fit into the very narrow scheme of the Act, and paragraph fourteen point thirteen makes that point. And before I turn to our operating schedule, there's another useful case which reminds us that licensing, in the UK, we're really fond of litigation and taking sides and him against her, and who will win? I think we learned that in the schoolyard. And that licensing is where, on the same side, it might not sound like it based on my submissions so far this morning, but actually, we're all trying to promote the licensing objectives. And so what's key here is whether or not the way which McDonald's proposes to operate between eleven o'clock and five AM can promote the licensing objectives. And so the key piece of evidence from your perspective is, obviously, I've alluded to the planning permission, the conditions that were linked to that, which you can see on the plan, also the operating schedule. Could there be anything further in the operating schedule that could lay concern? So that's a really important question because your responsible authorities have looked at this operating schedule and thought to themselves, no, actually, if the premises operates according to its operating schedule, then we can see that the licensing objectives about promoting prevention of crime disorder, promoting prevention of public nuisance, promoting public safety, protecting children from harm, can be met. And in fact, if anyone can suggest anything that we've missed, I'm really keen to hear about that, and I'm really welcome in discussion around that. And that really is a really good test to ask yourselves how these objections can filter into the regime. Is there anything to be suggested that goes above and below what we've looked at? So the police haven't thought about environmental health or licensing. So you can see, first and foremost, our operating schedule makes a commitment to operate well in the local area. As you know, just because there is a condition or something, it doesn't mean that we're not responsible. We engage frequently with police and local authorities, we seem to promote licensing objectives because we want to promote licensing objectives. We are community-based restaurants. Our catchment area is the local community, and we want to be a part of that. You can certainly look at it as just good business, but reality is that's just how we choose to operate. I've been representing McDonald's for more years than I can remember, I think it's close to twenty. And to the chagrin of my bank balance, I've never been instructed to represent McDonald's on a review application, which speaks to the quality of the way in which we operate. I was instructed by Mark's predecessor, Mark's been in post for how many years now?
Ten years.
Ten years, and we've never worked on a review together. So that gives you an indication of how we cooperate with local authorities to promote licensing objectives, to nip any concerns in the bud and ensure that we are providing an active positive contribution to the licensing objectives. So you can see in our operating schedule, I'll go through this relatively briefly, we have full and comprehensive CCTV. It comes to the internal areas, the external areas, and we operate our CCTV whether we're engaged in licentious activities or not. And it's important to remember that we are concerned about the impact of licentious activities, not what would happen at lunchtime or during the day, or whatever it may be. But nonetheless, we operate throughout that system. And we provide access to the CCTV, to the police and responsible authorities, as they need. And more often than not, we're a resource for them in order to deal with other matters that are unrelated to McDonald's directly, but nonetheless cross through our catchment area in much the same way that if you've got one of those doorbells which has a camera and someone's running in the street, the police knock on the door and say, can we borrow your CCTV at this time? You're not responsible for the fact that it was a mugging in the street and it just so happened that you caught that image. But as a responsible member of the community, sharing that CCTV subject to data protection, everything else that we act nowadays, that's a normal part. Staff safe, we keep staff safe in the store. Now, that's a long and very interesting function. If I understand of that, it's an external monitoring system. And what that does is it then shares audio and visual with an office in Scotland, actually, which is quite fascinating. And then you get this kind of voice that booms across the camera, across, and it says, you there in the green shirt typing, are you actually listening to us? She's very good, she hasn't responded. That trigger really works anyway, I made her smile. And so what that does in the restaurant is suddenly, if you become the target of this sort of disembodied voice highlighting your behaviour and warning that you're on CCTV, you pay attention, and you look at your bad behaviour, and you think about what that can do. And in fact, there are lots of little micro steps that are stored and taken in respect to producing crime disorder and antisocial behaviour. I find it a very sad fact that if we play classical music, that quiets people down and sends them home. This was something that was pioneered by the Belfast City Council, which sought to address the impact of street drinkers and antisocial behaviour in their area. And they found that if you play classical music over the public address system, rather than encouraging people to adopt culture and enjoy music, it just sends them away or sends them home. And that was a rather sad thing. So that's what happens in McDonald's. So changing music has a big impact, lighting levels, getting rid of free internet. These are all little micro tools that are used by McDonald's to address crime disorder. Linked to staff safety is that in many restaurants now, but it's pioneered by McDonald's. You'll have seen those touch screens where you go and you order your fries, your coffee, or whatever it may be. This means that the point of contact, I'm going to say this, I'm not sad about society generally, I think I'm getting old, but the point of contact between human persons is reduced. So you then can't say, you got one order wrong, can't be here, you don't understand me. There's a clear print how you've ordered what you like, you can now order from your phone. And that also has the effect of keeping staff safe and reducing crime and disorder. So a lot of effort has gone into designing our crime, designing our antisocial behaviour. So these external technical design aspects are supported by training. So this restaurant, the managers all have safety and safety training, which includes conflict training. And that's provided by an external organizer, mainly by their side of training. So all our staff and managers know how to deal with conflict, how to de-escalate it, and how to deal with it. And that's really, and that's always tailored to a local area. A city centre location is very different to an out-of-town location or in a store that might be part of a bigger or wider area. And we have our full health and safety, fire recs, city finks are always available on the side, supported by staff training. Across the entire McDonald's estate, we have a policy of no open alcohol containers. And in fact, because we are such a familiar quick-service restaurant, you know, people know the etiquette of coming to a McDonald's store, we don't rock alcohol, and they know how to order, how to eat, and so on. A huge problem we have, and we don't like it, is of course litter. That's raised in the representations. And the way that we respond to that is we support a number of initiatives. Up until recently, we had the binning campaign. Now we're promoting recycling because it's more up to date. That's still needs to be used, we use bins. So we have bins in stores, out of store, and we sponsor bins when they're coming from. And that's a lot easier said than done, talking about different regimes, you need highways, you need planning, and a great deal of joint-up thinking, which as we who work in local government know, is that this is a really brilliant that is often inspired, but not often reached. Nonetheless, we also work with local community groups. We have generally a number of annual litter picks, so Love Way Lovers campaign that we support. And so we go into schools and work with local community environmental groups, and we have litter pick decks to demonstrate the importance of not littering. And we'll stress that we pick up all litter, not just McDonald's litter. And then we also have our own litter pickers that are attached to each store. Each store will have a map and a route, and the route is like concentric circles. We have the near vicinity of our premises, and then we have a wider vicinity. The width of that vicinity is dependent on the interaction we have with the local community, but it's also subject to health and safety checks and insurance. We're not going to send people into the middle of a metro which will capture, for example, and I don't think local authority or the local government would invite us to do that. And it's worth pausing here to remember another key principle of licensing, which is in paragraph two point twenty-three or two point twenty-two of the section one oh two guidance, which says, beyond immediate control of premises, that is about individual responsibility. So that being the case, we nonetheless do have these litter picks. And what tends to happen is we'll have one at sunrise, and the last one at sunset, and then the period in between. It's only in our immediate catchment that we'll do things after dark because of insurance and safety issues. There are noise and light limits in place, you can see those on the plan, which have gone through very carefully with the planning application and with the... which I've gone through very carefully with the planning application and with the inspector. And we also have training in terms of keeping children safe from harm.
Sorry, just the application itself is very low indeed on noise controls. And we've had this plan fairly recently. Can you assist the committee, please, with the noise controls?
So, yes, so in terms of noise controls, you have seen that physically the area is attenuated by acoustic fencing, soft planting, and the way in which this would be kept up in order to keep noise at a low level. In terms of ordering, for example, through a car, we're able to control the levels of tunnel noise and sound systems and motor noise. You'll see from the parking bays that we're able to control where bikes come in. They have their own separate entrance, they're able to view those people that come in to the store to collect for delivery and where to go.
Excuse me, I'm not sure of the protocol here, but when would I be allowed to speak? Sorry.
That's a fair question. You will be, the procedure is that the applicant will present their case. Some committee, us up here, will then ask the applicants questions, which you will then have the opportunity to answer. And then I'll be coming to you. Those who have on my list of people who are able to speak are probably invited in turn. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just to add to that, there will be an opportunity for those who may have had presentations to ask questions of the applicant.
Yes.
So those are some of the features that are already incorporated in the design, the build and in the planning conditions that deal with the potential of noise impacts, say for plants. So there are plant specifications around extractors and so on, that deal with noise, that deal with smoke, that deal with smell. They're part of the planning. And as we know, there's a place called heat conditions. And then operationally, in terms of noise and disturbance, that is also incorporated in the planning. And I will say that every McDonald's restaurant, whether they are given late night refreshment or not, is constantly engaged in a process of risk assessment. So this is best demonstrated by our approach to litter picking. So we don't just take ones, we take definitely, we're able to assess locations and concerns, areas of concern, and we adapt our operating models to deal with that. So the operating schedule I've been going through are those conditions that we have found are the headlines, but they aren't the end of the story. They are just an indication of the more relevant licensing conditions that are part of the planning and general operation. Sorry, can you expand on that? But the final point on the operating schedule is that we generally don't find that we have unaccompanied children after twenty-three hundred hours. Our staff are also trained over to this, there's a training we have, to identify the kind of case that might be vulnerable. Snow, young children, children hanging around, children coming in when adults, they don't seem to be associated with these. All aspects of training and safeguarding that we adopt and enable the local authorities to demonstrate those concerns. So that broadly is our operating schedule, which is of course the key, I say. This application, this premises is likely to be granted to a franchisee. It's a local franchisee that actually has twenty-two restaurants, she employs three thousand people, and six of her restaurants are actually located in Norwich, she and her team are familiar with Norwich, the impact of Norwich, the responsible authorities, whom to talk with, whom to engage with. Of those six, three operate twenty-four seven. She always been on to record with concern or complaints or issues and also has never been reviewed. So both McDonald's and the franchisee are in good standing, if you will. So while rather than address individual concerns raised by different local residents, what I'm trying to do is demonstrate to you that through our operating schedule, through our procedures, we are able to promote the licence objectives, whether the concerns are specific or general, and we have a history of doing so. I said to myself, I was going to be brief, not sure how brief that was. Insofar as lawyer's time is concerned, that's quite good. I'm going to leave it there. And of course, I'm available as is Mark to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will at this point invite my fellow committee members to ask any questions of them when they have.
Thank you. To start the wonderful detail point, did you say there's a separate motor cycle access on the side? I'm thinking of motorbikes sort of revving up, waiting in a queue, behind cars and things.
The couriers or deliveries are able to park at the front. So what we do, I think on the plan it shows the yellow area, what we do is we keep a dedicated bay, depending on how we assess use and impact. And so we will direct, we're able to, something called geofencing, we're able to direct where couriers have to wait in order to be able to pick up orders and so on. And so they're able to wait on the ticket around, and then they're able to come into the store, the store plaque. They're able to come into the same area.
So so those couriers and customers on motorbikes, they would go, I mean, we gather there is a drive through the facility. There is a drive through the facility, but you know, actually, would that be, is the idea that that would be available over that as well?
Yes.
So motorbikers would go through the lane with the cars, probably. Okay, thank you. And then you talked about staffing. And this is, I think, relevant to dealing with possible antisocial behaviour. What sort of level of staffing would there be between the hours of eleven P M and five A M?
It's a fully staffed operation.
Means what is supposed to be staffed?
There's always a minimum of six people on site.
Too many?
Yes, sorry. There's a minimum of six people on site. Often it can be more. One of the advantages of these applications, because these applications aren't just about commercial viability, they're also about practicality to staffing as well as the environmental impact. What it means is that if someone starts a shift at ten, they're not clocking out at one or two and going to have a drink or another time coming, or having a full shift and going in the morning. And so what often happens is that additional staff might be employed, for example, to do with cleaning or deep cleaning or things that they're able to do during those quiet hours. So it's a minimum of six, and it depends on how busy it gets, what kind of needs there are, and so on. So it can be increased depending on the needs of the premises. But there's always a full rotor, there's always a manager, there's always trained staff on site.
Okay, thank you. That may come down to this.
Thank you, Shannon. And thank you for your presentation. I'd like just to cover the, there were three areas that you outlined in some detail regarding the application in section one and two. So just for clarity again for members of the public who's one of these committee members, section one and two guidelines did not require licensing committees to follow planning decisions. But it does say that you should be aware of them and know where to stand. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And the other one was about local issues. So licensing again is not for self-interest purposes or problems. But is the correct place to deal with noise disturbance and custom behaviour? Is that correct?
Only partly, insofar as noise, disturbance and so on are related to the proposed licence activities and hours. So general concerns and complaints, for example, about traffic, motorbikes, or whatever it may be, would not be relevant in terms of these.
Okay, thank you. And finally, responsible authorities, of course, the committee from the press, that there are responsible authorities have not made objections to this. But we do have forty-two objections from members of the public, which are relevant. So the responsible authority is not having objections, is not determinative on its own. Is that correct?
On its own, it's not determinative, but the High Court tells you in points that where there is an absence of responsible authorities, particularly police, that must weigh very heavily on your mind. And of course, you must sit very carefully whether or not the representations in their fullness are relevant and they are not just magnified fears, which is very clear in the case of points, and projections of local residents, because fears and projections and so on fall well below the standard of relevance. And so they are effectively not necessarily admissible, but a little or no weight, which is why I said at the outset, we may be very sympathetic to passions raised, but passions and fears are not good evidence upon which to base a decision, particularly when you have no representations from more responsible authorities. So it's probably a fake attack.
The summary of the points read out, and it didn't do so. On the application of Daniel Thwaites P L C, we will go to magistrate's court and case to digest. I'll not sit with anybody the entire summary. A decision of magistrate's court imposed restrictions on the hours of operation of licence premises was unlawful, as it had not been established it was necessary to do so to promote the licence objectives set out in the License Act two thousand and three. Obviously, at the time, it was a question of necessity, it's now a question of the appropriate abstract. The applicant public company applied for duty to review the decision of the defendant magistrate's court to restrict the hours of operation of licence premises and operating by the weights. They have applied to the licensing authority very existing licence, so as to allow it to conduct business at the premises for longer hours. To agree to restrict hours to those that were acceptable to the police, told the authority the applicant was to deliver the flexibility to implement later on special occasions. The licence granted was in effect for several months, during which there were complaints. However, an appeal was then brought by the first interested party in others. The magistrates, allowing me to appeal, expressed concern that the consequence of extended hours would be a consequence of licence premises in the strapping area would migrate to the premises operated by T. With the public uses of chronic disorder, magistrate accepted there'd be no complaints. But consider that during the winter months and that numbers would, sorry, that was during the winter months, and that numbers would increase during the summer months, causing nuisance and criminality. To submit in the magistrate's decision was unlawful because the License Act two thousand and three expected licence activities to be restricted only when that was necessary to promote the four licence objectives as set out in section four two, as mentioned when I talk about appropriate. And that the restrictions imposed were not necessary to promote those objectives. They also pretended the magistrate had failed appropriately to consider the London Government's power. Appeal granted, the magistrates did take account of licence objectives, and while they did not articulate a curtail under the hours rule as necessary, it was implied on their decision they did take that view. However, their approach, what was necessary, was covered by failure to make proper account of the changed approach to licence and introduced by Act. Had they had proper regard to the Act and the guidance, they would approach the matter with greater reluctance from those regulations and would look for real evidence that it was required on circumstances of the case. Their conclusion, it is a problem of most of the risk of litigation from other premises or vicinity, was not on to properly direct a bench of the court. The fact that the police did not impose the hours rule, it should have weighed very heavily over them, whereas they did dismiss the police view because it did not prove their error. They showed also, considered specifically the question of how frequently the premises would be likely to open late and made findings about it. They would not have been able to compare that with the winter open pattern, which to which they accept there had been no complaints, and draw proper implications as to the extent to which some months would be likely to differ from the winter picture. They would also be unable to draw more reliable implications about the willingness of customers from further field to migrate to these premises. The magistrates proceeded without proper evidence and gave their own views assessing weight. The resulting decision limited the hours of operation amount to being established it was necessary to do so to promote the licence objectives, as it was there from lawful and was quash. Counselors, I would give weight to, in summary, the magistrates proceeded without proper evidence and gave their own views assessing weight. I would recommend you don't do that. Is that helpful?
And would the applicant like to make any comment to that passage?
That's very kind. I'm not sure we really mean that, and I would appreciate it. No, it's been very well received. You have my comments on twice. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've got one or two questions my hand. In your presentation, you mentioned the catchment is the local community. Local community can mean different things to different people. So my question is, what do you mean by the local community? And if it is what some would think is people who live locally, how do you see the need for a drive-in and car park catchment area is the local community? But yeah, if you could tell me what you mean by local community, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Well, of course, you're absolutely right. Firstly, of course, the question of need is not a factor that you can take into account. And the section of the guidelines expressly says to you, need is not something you can take into account. I can't remember where I checked it for you. That is provided. So the local community will vary. It will be both people within walking distance, it will be most people within driving distance. Insofar as they're always concerned, it's generally people that live within fifteen to twenty minutes because if you have food delivered to you and it's more than fifteen or twenty minutes beyond you, then you're going to get cold food. So that gives you a sense of different circles that tends to operate. So depending on how you're going to use it, whether it's by foot or by car, the local community is an elastic concern. And that's why the operating schedule speaks to different aspects. So for example, CCTV, staff safety and so on, deal directly with in-store diners or people that take away. Litter picking deals with on-store and the immediate vicinity, so ensuring our environment is looked after by us and doing our part. And then things such as the noise barriers, the planting, the sound controls or the tunnel, is about the sort of near neighbours. And then thinking about where we might put the different jobs, where we might park them, having a separate entrance to them is obviously far wider. So we kind of look across those concentric pools of a community, which perhaps we should have said, impact rather than that came into my view in the ways we're thinking about it.
My colleague mentioned how many staff you'd have on between the hours of eleven and five. And you mentioned staff and their different roles. I just wanted to clarify, are all staff, depending on whether they're cleaning, cooking, managers trained in escalation training?
Obviously, there's an ongoing, rolling training system. And in fact, each store, including this, will, if fully functional, even if it's actually functioning until eleven o'clock, so within non-licence hours, will employ between a hundred to a hundred and thirty people. So there's a huge amount of people that's engaged. Every person who's worked in McDonald's, or for McDonald's, starts at, every franchisee has worked in the kitchen. Every franchisee has worked on the tails. In fact, you can't become a franchisee until you've gone through all those stages. Have you ever asked Mark this? I haven't. Yes, so people start as crew members. And so at each level, you are trained. If you are going to have a public-facing role, then your training in terms of risk and conflict management will incorporate that. So when you start as crew in the kitchen, obviously, health and safety, food preparation is all a key priority. When you are then public-facing, conflict training, sort of management and so on, becomes relevant. When you, there are first agents, there are managers, there are deep people who can deal with staff safety and CCTV and so on. I mean, we used to bring the folders. safety and CCTV and so on. I mean, we used to bring the folders, and even used to make copies of them, because there were about four massive folders, and the regulations at the gym, and no one would look at them. But it's ongoing, it's refreshed, it's kept under review, it responds to new national developments and local developments, and that's one of Mark's roles.
Thank you. Thank you. And my next question, possibly last question, refers to pages twenty and twenty-one of the agenda pack. The first bit is the, on page twenty, under section eighteen and twenty-one, licensing objectives. We believe that the systems we have in place are robust, thorough, and will aspire to be reasonably practical, secure the promotion of the four licensing objectives, which obviously does include the noise. And on page twenty-one, where it is practical to do so, we are content for the medicines placed to limit noise. You mentioned self-closing doors, but your presentation leads me to believe that you do consider the area of your car park to be an area of your responsibility, referring back to the section you mentioned regarding area of responsibility. On pages twenty and twenty-one, you don't mention specifically what those robust systems you have planning to have in place, but in your presentation, you mentioned the use of acoustic fencing and soft planting. My first question would be, how much noise do you expect the acoustic fencing and soft planting to mitigate? It'd be good to, you know, learn a little bit more about that and what its expectation levels would be. My second question is part of this question. You mentioned the playing of classical music in the area, presumably outside, but you're correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so the classical music would be inside the restaurant rather than outside. Okay, so, thank you for answering that part. So we'll go back to the part if I may.
Obviously, each site is unique. So I highlighted on the plan the acoustic fencing, the soft planting, the sort of design to the, quite hard and plodding, so that the noise settles. It's a low building. Our extractive plants have noise limitations. The general standard is so as not to undermine local community. There would have been an assessment as part of the planning process at what are the noise levels, what are the background noise, how do we intend it at that. One standard that is used is, for example, the Environmental Protection Act, so as not to cause undue interference with neighbouring land. Although for example, cars are dealt with, is that there's lighting, CCTVs, and couch perpetrators, but also speed bumps and limits, so you're not able to drive very fast and create noise. By controlling where we have our couriers, for example, we have CCTV on there, we can see them, we can either approach them directly, or we can see on our CCTV if there's any particular issues or complaints about that. Because we're a drive-through, our drive-through cameras are able to capture the number plates, so we can do a compliance for offenders at minor rise in respect of those. You're right, we have self-closing doors, we have acoustic building, the music is only internal insofar as that happens. So the reason we say we put in practical measures in place is because it just varies from store to store. And we know, and you know, that just, whether or not there's a condition on it, if we are going to be using, we work in queue, or we may face action under the Environmental Protection Act. So we are committed to ensuring that that doesn't happen, and that's happened as part of the dissonant and the bang and build.
Chair, ten on the, the only plan that came with the application was on page twenty-eight, is that right?
That's correct, yeah. The additional plan was requested by themselves, and it was supplied for by the Donalds.
So at the moment, the application doesn't actually include this A three that we've got?
That's correct. It's just the plan that was in the board pack.
Is it the applicant's intention to amend their application to introduce the controls that were previously set out on this A three plan?
Well, I don't need to, because my application says where it's practical to do so, we are content to put measures in place to limit noise. As you know, licensing is a prospective exercise. If this licence is granted, we are under a duty to promote the licensing objectives. What you can see from the plan respective, in terms of the request of your quality from planning, is an indication of how it performs to operate. I'm not suggesting that these are translated into conditions, because they're already conditions as a matter of planning. They are in place on the ground as of today in any event. So I don't need to amend my application.
It answers my question. Chair, the applicant says, in summary, they're in planning, so they don't need to do licensing?
That's correct. And your technical environmental health and planning officers, or your licensing officer, has not given any indication of a need anymore duplication of existing measures. And it seems within my application would be that our commitment to ensuring the promotion of licence objectives and dealing with a noise point of arise is more than sufficient. It doesn't matter for you, of course, if you want to impose conditions, how it's applicable or any suggestions that you or anyone has.
Chair, I will be flagging, and it has already been flagged by the council, to give this our separate process. Considerations are different. I'll find a necessary paragraph in the one-eight-two guidance, I need.
I think the article's paragraph one point eleven, the section one-eight-two guidance, it says not to repeat existing conditions. So, well, you're welcome to say, put a condition for soft planting, or a condition for acoustic barriers, or whatever it may be, or to have a noise management plan, but it would be repetition. In fact, if it helps, because that is available, what I would suggest to bring into the consideration, the overarching considerations is if the premises licence is granted, for the premises to maintain and keep up to date, a noise management plan, which should be available on request to the police and the responsible authorities. And then that way, we can lift from the planning all the measures that we've put in place, and put them in a, can't be pasted into a licensing document, and have that available for you.
Chair, the wording suggested was imprecise. To have a plan doesn't say what's going to be in the plan, nor since saying whether those contents will be agreed, and therefore I would be recommending against a condition to that effect.
Well, I'm grateful for that. It's a very common condition. Licensing is about reacting to a developing situation. To have a noise management plan is, in my experience, very, very familiar. It is not vague or imprecise. It enables the operator to say exactly what is in their plan. Typically, noise management plans, dispersal plans, risk assessments, or whatever it may be, are not subject to agreement. We do take advice from the responsible authorities, but that makes the responsible authorities responsible for micro-managing and how we operate. So if we agree something, and then we come back to and say, well, this proved a bit tough, just to give you an example, it was common way back in the day, to have security as approved or recommended by the police, those security operators would then misbehave, and the operator would come to a review, and they'd say, well, I wish to be what the police told me, you can't blame me, which is really unhelpful. So having a noise management plan in the wording that I suggested is very typical and normal. And obviously, it's up to you to take the different legal opinions into account and come to your own decision.
Conditions need to be precise and forceful, and if we don't know what's in it, I don't see how it can be either precise or logical and forceful. You don't know what's going to be there.
The only thing that I'm offering is that I will have a noise management plan. Its quality, its content, its effectiveness is a matter for the operator. If that is found to be lacking, then it's a matter for review or action by your environmental health officer. It is very precise. You must have a noise management plan, that's all. That's what I'm offering.
On the back of that, a clarification, should the licence be granted today, it is for the area that is detailed on page twenty-eight, that is the licensable area. So any management, noise management plan would be referring to that area within those red lines. Am I right?
So, well, that reflects the area of licensable activity, so that's where the refreshment is made available. As you know from licensing, the sale of supplied alcohol is the licensable activity. Consumption, of course, is not a licensable activity. So it often means that you've got a beer garden, you've got the pump for the car park. Being aware of the impacts is something that is relevant in licensing, strictly speaking. You could argue, I suspect, more than a doy in the market, that they wouldn't be relevant. But think, for example, deliveries. One of the planning requirements and common licensing condition is there be no deliveries of supplies between eleven o'clock at night and seven o'clock in morning, or seven o'clock at night and seven o'clock in the morning, which is the way in which we operate generally. And that doesn't relate to licensable activities, it relates to deliveries. And the fact that we deliver in burnout, it's to be used every day, really shouldn't concern the licence community. But when we think about the holistic approach, we're more than happy in a regulatory machine such as this to go beyond what is strictly necessary. So to have a noise management plan, that goes beyond the boundary, so it includes the kind of things that we would have would be our pond and our acoustic barriers and limits on our tannoy and so on, how we deal with the motorbikes in the car park area, what we have in terms of the music policy, all of these, many of them are outside the scope of the licensing machine and that footprint we would put in. We do it, and it's very standard for licensing operations, because we're concerned about the operation and its impact far more widely.
Chair, there is an addition, it's ten again. Looking at page twenty-eight, the red line boundary was set to be the application entirely to the far end of that. So, I don't know, this is one of the original, the questions being taken over at the board, of course.
Because people order and take away from the premises.
So, trying to cover the outside area consumption?
No, because consumption is not a licensable activity, whether it's for alcohol or for refreshment.
Chair, it's irrelevant, it just looks a bit odd.
Well, there's nothing odd about this. This is how all the applications for McDonald's are done, and covered, and indeed many other quick service restaurants or lay-up refreshment companies that I've dealt with. I'm not familiar with the, I've not been to Norwich for hearing for a very long time. So if there are local customs, and I'm not saying they're not, and I'm not familiar with them, I want to apologize, but as far as I'm concerned, it's elsewhere within the region.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I just, I really am keen to hear from the residents' city, because they've been waiting very patiently, and we have, and the experiences of those people will be important for the committee. But I would just like to establish just a couple more facts, because we'll do that if I can. And so we've got the map as presented, which is building itself. And we've got the overall process of McDonald's, which is rather larger, and it goes to the, it goes to the boundaries of gardens along Playford Road. The woodland, which is Minnesota Heath, and the garage next door, of course, the road, includes car parking, and the outdoor area where people sit and eat, the play area, and the lane for collections at the, perhaps, is that what you call it? So, from the point of view of this application, are you taking responsibility for the area outside the red line on your plan?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. That's just, something that we talk about in the licensing is that the red line forms a boundary. So if we're talking about a wider area, can we just establish what parts of that wider area will give the public for their use between the hours of eleven at night and five in the morning? So, for example, will the, is Stacey Patten on the playroom looking at, will that be open, will the play area be open to the public during those hours?
Certainly, no. And that can be subject to a condition. What we do is we work with, play areas will close generally when the sun goes down. So that's just how it operates, it's a matter of careful safety. So play areas will get locked. There will be no risk assessment between health and safety insurers and so on, to work out how that is going to operate. And the last thing we want is unhelpful elements using that area. The, and that's the similar situation with the Patten area. We close it at a certain time. Given that the Patten area faces the garage, it is protected by a screen, it's possible to open that. But I'm certainly open to discussing whether that needs to be restricted to a particular, to a particular time. What we find is that the outside area is always closed by eleven o'clock. So if you want to impose a condition that the outside area of the Patten should not be used between the hours of three hundred hours and five hundred hours, if you want to roll the margins, I would be in the bottom of that, because that just reflects our policy.
Okay, thank you. Are you offering that as a condition to the committee today?
Since yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have the precise wording there, please?
Sure, I'll work that out and pass that.
Okay, well, I think I've already said enough to be heard from residents, I hope. So that'd be an opportunity. Can I just also just clarify then, there is reference to Playford in the, both the application plan and the, and the appeal decision. So there is something there. But you've offered a condition to close that area, so that is covered. And the, and so the drive-through and the hatch where you order on the tannoy, and then drive around to collect all the food, is it the intention to have that open for the entire period, eleven o'clock and nine o'clock in the morning?
Yes.
So total four hours?
Yes.
For that. Okay, thank you. And the car park, there will be an opportunity for people to buy food in the restaurants and take it to their cars and maybe continue there?
It's not encouraged, but as we know... It's not encouraged, but as we know from the guidance, what you do with your shopping or your food is really a matter for you and your personal responsibility. So if you go into a local B P and you get a cup of coffee and fill up a petrol sandwich and decide to eat it in your car, that really is a matter for you. Whether you take it home is also a matter for you. And with our car parks, they're well, they're covered by CCTV, they're monitored by our staff. So if you're committing a social behavior or a disturbance, we will see you, we know who you are, and we take appropriate action. So our car parks tend not to be the best places to bother or to commit a social behavior.
Okay, can you describe how you deal with the situation where there was a congregation, perhaps, of two or three cars and the occupants, which are making some noise, either with voices, the car stereos, or other noises, the car doors sounding?
So, they're covered by CCTV, as I said. We have their details. Our staff are trained to engage, insofar as it's safe to do so, with disruptive patterns. If it is not safe to do so, we stop safe. And if necessarily we escalate that on anyone else who appears to be a victim of crime or disorder, and we call the police and we assist the police by providing witness statements, CCTV and recordings to discourage that. We also have signage in our car parks which make it clear that they respect our neighbours. We have signage that says on our CCTV, "We're effectively watching you", and that's the culture that we adopt and the measures that we take place. We act proactively to encourage that culture from very early on, rather than for it to become a problem in the future, which is why we don't get reviews. So if these individuals are particularly relevant or particularly concerned about X, Y and Z, we will work with them to develop a cooperative action plan. And that's determined on a real case-by-case basis across these states, across the different stores.
Okay, thank you. Can I, Chair, just one more follow-up on that? So you get, people may complain, you said yourself, it's up to them that they want to be there. They're just waiting, they're just looking outside. But they may want to be doing that without it being illegal levels of disturbance or, otherwise, not breaking the law. But the noise that they make may well be audible to local residents. How do you square that off with your policy and how would you mitigate that case?
Well, I think so you've answered that question. Obviously, there's going to be an impact. There are background noises. There are impacts that are acceptable because there are lawful consequences of land use operations or licensing operations. The key is to do all you can to prevent it becoming a public nuisance. And I've gone through the various details that we've gone through. If something becomes a public nuisance and they're not able to have action, they will work with the responsible authorities. And if our efforts are found to be wanting, then there's the review, there's the Environmental Protection Act and so on. And I can tell you there are no extensive views, there are no extensive environmental protection actions against us because we work collaboratively to deal with them on a case-by-case basis, responding to the local circumstances around. There is a reason that this premises has been designed in the way that it has thought has gone into. In fact, I think we're unique in terms of quick service thresholds to have separate doors, separate access for drivers, separate facilities in that respect. We've written literally four paragraphs from the design level through to licensing, which is why we're confident in making these applications on the done country.
Thank you, Chair. Just one more, coming back on that. It is fair to say though, isn't it, that a noise disturbance that may be audible, especially late at night when the ambulance noise levels are very low, these noise levels will not be at a level that is causing a disturbance where the police would necessarily need to be called. But from a licensing point of view, they could be, it could be a disturbance in terms of that particular licensing objective. So I am saying that only legal levels of ASP are going to be relevant in this case because I think that would be wrong.
So you're entitled to have an impact in the area so long as it doesn't become a public nuisance, and that is a legal test. So if you breach that, then obviously matters need to be taken into account. There is no evidence of such breaches, first of all, because we have one recorded. But the most important thing is the question of whether we're doing what we can to mitigate that. And as a matter of planning and immunity, the conditions on that is yes, McDonald's are doing what we can, and so we don't introduce that immunity beyond the line. We are then building on that through the licensing operating schedule to further reinforce our measures through direct conditions. But even if there are no conditions, what I've been trying to demonstrate is through our general operation that we will seek to ensure that there is no public nuisance. And obviously, we'll be aware of that, Donalds, and also say whether you're aware of your neighbour barbecuing or your neighbour that's having, you know, playing their music or whatever, or fixing their car on their driveway. And normal consequences of lawful operations do not become public nuisance or disorder.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure people won't be working on their cars overnight. That would probably be a disturbance to residents. Okay, thank you for that. I am going to have some questions, but clearly, people who can speak, I mean, it's obviously up to the chair. I'd like to hear from you.
Okay, given that I didn't promise that we'd have a break about one o'clock, I am going to move on to asking the people here who've been patiently waiting to make representations.
Chair, do you want to be an opportunity now for the persons to make relevant representations to ask questions?
I was also going to reiterate that please to be mindful when you do give your representations that this is premises licensing hearing, considering only this application is not relevant to planning. And I was going to invite them, they did mention, reiterate the point about an evening as well at this point.
Oh, frankly, it's already been mentioned. Such a guidance lead is not something this committee can take into account. I'd also flag the question of public safety as one of the licensing objectives. It means public safety persons in the premises. It does not mean motor speeding several roads away, for example. It's these premises are public safety, for that's all.
Just want to check a point with the, with that, people. Just to check the question.
Those who've made relevant representations and the applicants are all parties and subject to your permission. Persons can ask questions to each other. That suggests it's appropriate to do so. So everybody has made a relevant representation, or I guess someone who speaks on their behalf may ask a question.
Okay, well, if anyone would at this point like to ask any questions at the app, and now's the time to do so, and then time allowing, we will then move on to presenting of the objections that you made. So if you, yeah, just show the hands, thank you. If you can give your name first and then drop us your objection.
Yeah, great. So, obviously, said that, oh, now there are at least six staff orders that are rare, going to be on the side of the tunnel. But there are only three staffing spaces. So whether they're to intention, they'll be parking their cars during those times. And then with working hours, let's say, may end up with, let's say, a six or six shift, it's twelve hours. Six or six, they're obviously then causing disruption and then it's right, okay?
Well, where people park or how they get to work is not a relevant consideration. I don't want to say that last time, of course, this caution.
Tim Marshall, I'd just like to ask, looking at the plan, as the cars come into McDonald's and coming round, my son Ben is seventeen, as it are, the headlights will directly shine into his property and all the people who are along that side. The acoustic fencing is wood, and I've been at the building site this week, and that acoustic fencing makes absolutely no difference to the noise level that comes across from the McDonald's side. So it's ludicrous to say that acoustic fencing helps noise. It certainly doesn't block out the diggers, so how it's going to block out the exhaust and engines, I do not know. But the point being is that when Ben's upstairs, that's his bedroom, and that's a lot of bedrooms there, how is that acoustic fencing going to stop all the head trauma that's protruding into their properties? I just don't get it. And also, I looked at all the McDonald's in Norwich, and this is a, it's unique. This McDonald's is terrificly unique because the other McDonald's are not in residential areas at all, except for Tuxwood. Tuxwood is the only one that is in a residential area, and there's signs up there saying, "Please keep the noise down", great signs. Thank you. That's very good. McDonald's put those signs. I was standing there for ten minutes and it made absolutely no difference. Cars rolled around in the car park. And so the question is, sorry, I'm not round in Norr, the question is, how is that acoustic fencing going to stop light pollution into their properties?
Oh, I'm grateful that your legal advice has indicated traffic considerations are not relevant for this committee. I know that's harsh and hard, but that's the legal reality. Acoustic fencing deals with noise, not light pollution, so the answer was there. Light pollution, so-called, is linked with traffic used to the premises of the road, not the premises. In terms of the premises itself, we're able to control our lighting levels both internally and externally. And we'll often work with environmental help insofar as thinking that's an issue. But there is typically a lighting program that operates. For example, if you had the sort of big, the big signs, we're able to load the illumination back. And we do that on a case-by-case basis. Yeah, acoustic fencing deals with noise, but we're light.
Chair, just for clarity. Regarding traffic, traffic at the site is logically relevant, in the same way as persons sitting down in a beer garden is logically relevant. My comment was raised in respect of activities well beyond the site and outside of control of the premises licensing. Nothing regarding traffic is irrelevant to Pat's premises.
Can I, Tim Marshall again, can I also ask, McDonald's, the aircon units that will be on top of the McDonald's, okay, adds to light pollution, but what about after eleven o'clock when the residents are trying to sleep? They've had a hard day at work? The extraction systems that hum all night long and the aircon units, if anyone has ever had an aircon unit, they hum all night long. And I presume that the McDonald's will be airconed? And how is that fencing going to stop, that I presume the aircon units are, how is it going to stop the noise of the McDonald's running their business, basically?
Oh, well, aircon units and our extraction units are subject to the condition of planning. They are modern, they are new, they are specifically designed to deal with noise impacts, filter, smell and so on. And we have no complaints in mind in which they do operate or are advised to operate this site.
Yeah, I've got one, Matthew Freeman. So in regards to licensing, as you mentioned, you mentioned crime prevention and public users. With the information that you've provided this morning, you've got the freedom of information request for two local McDonald's restaurants, Tuxwood and Mary Road. There has been a significant number of incidents at and around these properties within the last five years. And you've mentioned that there wouldn't be a concern in and around the premises at this location, given the fact that other members of the public in the area around have mentioned that this is one McDonald's which is near an public area and the residents are placing a very, very adjacent to the property. The main thing for us, as you've mentioned, is the sounds and the nuisances which are police disturbances. But we wouldn't want to be wasting the police time and contact if the noise levels were below the legal limits. But again, it's going to be, as you mentioned as well, the legal representatives of the council are saying, sound and traffic within the location, light and sound is public nuisance. And also with the police information that we've received is increased levels of crime disorder. How are you going to control this location in where it is situated from eleven P M to five A M? You are incentivising people to, as you say, park in the car park and eat their food. That's absolutely fine. We didn't have anything like this beforehand. There was a point of coagulation of these local youths in their reputable cars to coagulate. And you've incentivised, you have had control of whether members of the public are using your car park and not going into your restaurant. So what's to say that you are going to have people using a car park that could be causing these disturbances? Your staff bear in mind, these are
last fifteen minutes. I'd like to proceed by, that's where we left off, asking those who haven't spoken to their representations to speak. So we'll do that in turn, and then I'll invite my fellow committee members to ask any questions. And then the applicant can also ask any of the interested parties questions about the representations that they've made. So first of all, I think it's the Jack Maitland, whose representation is on page eighty-four. Just a reminder to speak to the representation that you've made. Thank you.
I'll powerfully some of it, because I think it's not good, it's not been covered. But I'll start with prevention of public nuisance. So operating in our own constructed area and coverage of disturbance, especially alcohol-related activity, that's been taken beforehand. So I've done this eighteen, when you're friends with driving. You know, you all go out for drinks, one of your friends drives you to a McDonald's, you eat, you drink, and, you know, after a night out, you enjoy the amenities. I've done this. I did it in Garry Under where it was a gap, and there'd be groups of people congregating. And it was just natural what happened after a night out. I think that's, although it's difficult, when, you know, we say, well, this is imaginative, it's difficult because you've done it, you know. So I know that that's going to happen, is that people in the city who are coming out of the city that way will congregate in an area like this because it's naturally, naturally going to work out. Yeah, so attraction with groups will naturally result in extraleges presence that would be required. Because we've talked about the instance of Curd, and people are naturally congregating in the area, which will increase noise and increase through traffic to the area. And I've talked about light pollution, we talked about the beer, laying out deliveries, which obviously I was aware that it's only concerned, so almost only silver, which is good, but it was a concern. It's only quite neighborhood after dark, which is only in it through traffic. I'm an avid runner, so after work I go out and you really, you know, you don't tend to run into a lot of traffic. You can easily cross into a household with no problem at those traffic lights. The twenty-four hour operation of well-attracted groups towards night, as I said, is, I've lived that life, I've been eighteen, I'm sure we all have, and there was always a temptation afterwards, after you've had a drink, after you've been to the pub, after you've socialised, to go to these areas. And now, like I said, in our area, it was an industrial estate called Gatton Hall, if you're aware of it, but that's where we used to go. So I'm very much aware that then having one in this area will result in the same thing. And you can't blame eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds that wanted to go out and have a good time getting food and really at the night. But it will result in, in public, yeah, it may be a nuisance and so on. And we move on to disturbance to local wildlife. So obviously, McDonald's directly back on to Mountford East, which I love, you know, everything Christmas, you know, for walks around, every
It's not going to disturb, but I have trouble finding this relevant to only the four my speakers.
Okay, yes, if I'm promoted to discuss littering and the area of regularly see much idea walking around on the park, you see them floating around. And the litter that will be produced from McDonald's, particularly away from plying hours at evening, will result in additional litter. People do things in isolation that they won't do in groups. So at night, where there are, you know, many staff on, where there isn't many people about to regulate that kind of social pressure, they will end up throwing litter away. As well, you can do as much as you can to signage, postage, et cetera, but people will avoid that. And, yeah, and the other, that litter won't be picked up until the morning. And that means that other wildlife will be affected by the litter that is thrown. Or not disposed of with the program. Once the law, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding, I don't rest on that, but that's me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maitland, I'm going to take. Tim Marshall speaking on behalf of Ben Marshall, on behalf of page eighty-seven.
Okay, thank you. No, I'd just like to say about the prevention of public nuisance, really. Just to say that I think it is a very quiet area. I've lived in Swarstone and Norwich all my life. I know that area very well, I went to Swarstone High School, which is just down the road from there. That area is very quiet at night and impacts on the Mountford East, as we've all said. It is very quiet, Ben's been there two and a half years and bought his property then. I've been in the garden at night and we've had barbecues. We've had Sunday roast and it's quiet. It is a very, very quiet area. And I said to Ben, I can't believe how quiet this place is. It's nothing, I just can't believe it, the trees at the back there. Now, with the residential period in, obviously, you, you know, I know there's a lot of the staff that are trained, but to stop people roaring off down that road, I don't know if anyone knows the ring road and where that side of that McDonald's is, but that is a long road and you have to accelerate hard out of that. And it's just a noise pollution. At night time, those residents are going to have to put up with their accelerating cars. The people that are using it early hours of the morning, at three and four or five in the morning, it's quiet, there's no police about, there's no about, they are not going to care, they are not going to... I know the staff are trained, but really, they're on minimum wage. Are they really going to stop them from creating noise and pollution? I don't think so. Just on the note of prevention of crime and disorder, is the data from Norfolk Standbury, the Freedom of Information, that violence against persons, one year there was two, barrel road, then three another year, then ten another year, then six, it clearly shows the premises. You know, there is violence against people. And I would say that that will, you would need the police services there on site. So why would you want blue flashing lights at two, three, four in the morning? So that's just a little bit on prevention of crime and disorder. I think a lot, pretty much everything has been said, really. The bay parking, yeah, another thing, you can order your food on your phone. So you can sit in the bay parking as long as you like. Leave your engine running and order your food from that app that is on your phone. So at early hours of the morning, you can sit there for a long time, order your food and you can eat it there. So I think that's important to make. And finally, just one more thing, is that, as I said, I did look at the other McDonald's in the city. I took photographs of them and I spent a little bit of time looking at them. And this particular site is unique because you've got the airport, which is not surrounded by residents. You've got the boundary, which is actually marked cross. You've got the British Red Cross at the back of it. You've got B and Q car park at the side of that, you've got the Whiffon pub. There is no residents affected. You've got the Madder Market, no residents affected. You've got up in the middle, up on Broad and Gate, the new McDonald's there, no residents are affected. The ten McDonald's that are in Norwich, there is only one that is affected, that the residents are affected, and that is Tuxwood. Tuxwood is the only McDonald's with gardens that come on to the back of the McDonald's. But they're almost close, they're not as close as what Sprowshire McDonald's is going to be. That is unusually close. I know the planning is done, so that, but the point what we try to make is the noise nuisance for those residents is greater than the ten McDonald's that are currently in Norwich. Eleven, sorry, eleven. You know, there's Hainault, there's Longwater, there's Brundle, there's Asda, there's Riverside. Riverside is surrounded by units of shops. There's no residents there. So why is it that this particular McDonald's has been slapped down in the middle of Mountford with the residents, I know it's licensed, so it's irrelevant what I'm saying. But the noise factor that those residents are going to gain is totally unique and amplified over and above ten McDonald's that are already in Norwich. And, yeah, twenty-four hours. So that's really it, I know everything else has been covered, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Marshall. Anne Kirk on Jill Saunders' behalf and hundred and three, page eight, thank you.
Just to tell you what Jill was doing, you would see somebody who spent their life working with courts as a guardian of rights and working with decision, having decisions about whether children come into care, whether they're adopted and so on. And that, twenty-five years doing that job, has had an effect on her. She doesn't sleep well and she has other issues. So her main concern is about light and noise because she needs to sleep. She sent you photos and I don't see them in the bag, but there is a direct line of sight from the area where the cars will queue and where they will drive around for their collections to the building.
Sorry, just that we need to keep her close care on what's in front of her, what is in front of her. So as we mentioned, photographs being sent in, I'm certainly not aware of any camera license sent in, help.
Well, there should have been, they were sent to you, should have been. I would simply say that there is a direct line of sight from where the cars are parked collecting or making their orders to the bedrooms on Plafford Road. And there is nothing to stop the light or the noise pollution. Now, the difficulty we've got is that it's emerged this morning. I've set up businesses, I've sold them, and I've set up other businesses. I have never, ever set up a business when I didn't know what the projected income was. McDonald's are here to say to you, they don't know what the projected income is because they don't know how many cars. I don't believe that, I find that hard that McDonald's would even say that. The problem that you have is that if there's two hundred and fifty cars every night, then the noise and light pollution and the lights going into the bedrooms is massive. If there's only two, not such a problem. How can you make a decision today on the light and noise pollution coming from this organisation unless you know what the level of light and noise pollution is going to be? Doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Can we just clarify the licensing advice about the photographs that you referenced?
Chair, I'm not aware of the photographs that were sent in. They had been sent in, I mean, including on the board back. I'm just checking, yeah, I'm not aware of the photographs that were sent in.
I was there when you, no, to you.
I didn't make the board back, but I can check, but I can't, I'm not aware of any photographs that came in.
As I said, back, these photos aren't a big deal. The fact is, there is a direct line of sight from the bedroom to the, over the top of the hearing hall. Hearing hall, sound through a few more.
Yes, thank you, yes, we don't have any photographs. I don't and I can't, you know, have the right licensing advisor. And I can't add anything to that, but I think you made your point about what the effect is in that photographs very well. I'd like to invite my fellow committee members to ask any of you who've made your presentations to if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Kirk, um, no, relating to what you said. So you said that there's a line of sight. Just for our benefit, just so we're actually certain, exactly where all the lights from cars are shining to bedroom windows. Because obviously, we've got a loop around the building in a U shape. Is it around the back that you show your back on the rises?
There's a dotted yellow line on the right hand side between some survivor. That's where the cars will come round the back of the building. As they come round the back of the building, their lights will strobe down the back of Plafford Road houses into the bedrooms. There's nothing to stop that happening. And even if they've got dipped headlights, you know as well as I do, they stray about you, adjusted, you know, those lights will hit the bedrooms on Plafford Road.
Okay, so we don't have the photos, so it sounds like they're not going to be available. So the committee can take this red unless the has some country evidence to say that this won't happen.
Just so all you have is an assertion. It's up to you to pose what value you do all the discussion. I don't accept that assertion, so obviously we adjudicate a few of your colleagues.
Okay. Would I be allowed to speak or not? To the Chair? Yes, I would go. Ben, number seventeen, Plafford Road. I'm working here at a property study, but as you come around that end, they shot straight into his bedroom window. That is, you won't come to the property and have a look at it, you won't. But that, number seventeen, Plafford Road, old record, if you come around that end, they will shoot in the
And thank you, Pat. I'm clearly wearing that to some of this and I don't know whether David can advise us. I guess I've got feedback here on this, somebody has got their mic on, is that a problem?
I've got the best light on there, microphone.
It's just this mic, apologies. I'll try to speak out and stay away from the mic. So I want David to keep his number. Thank you, I hope that's basically, we need to turn the mics on so it's picked up by the feed. Okay, so David, are you able to advise the committee on this matter? So for example, would great weight be given to this light pollution? And as a result of that, do we need to establish exactly the evidence, the fact here, so otherwise either to have some kind of photographic evidence or a side visit in order to establish it? So really, I'm looking at, you know, procedures, how do we move forward on this? Because some evidence has been put forward that is disputed. And I think we should probably get it resolved.
It would be very unusual, but not unheard of to assign, is it? If you feel you need more evidence, you've got a local resident who says this will happen. Called assertion, fine, it is disputed. You can find the finding of fact on the evidence in front of you. As to if you find there is going to be direct light, then it's over to you as to what way you give to that problem. And as I was saying, there is a need to answer to, do you want to sign with it? It would, that would be unusual.
May I personally request that you should, do you have a please, to take legal advice?
Yes, you may. We'll adjourn for five minutes. So if you could leave the chamber and in five minutes.
Thank you everybody for your patience and quality staff. That was rather more than five minutes. And as you remember, we were discussing whether to... the committee members to conduct a site visit to establish some of the points that have been made and look at what it looks like on the ground, establishing facts we can. So that means that we will be adjourning to conduct that site visit, which means that we will need to find a mutually convenient date.
Marm, it's very interesting you've come to your decision without asking the views of the parties. Is it that our views are not being solicited or we're not interested in our views? Could you explain?
I don't need to present.
Well, you've made the decision. What's the point?
If I may, when asked whether you disputed the claim that there would be light pollution through the windows of the private road, you disputed that. So you weren't consulted on the facts that we want to establish. And you suggested a site visit might be the best way of resolving that particular issue, but also give us an opportunity to get a feel for the site and see some other areas of the site on plan and establish some of the other facts that have been suggested. Indeed, the... an opportunity to do that demonstrates that we are following a very good close procedure. And I think members of the public will see that we're taking this decision very seriously because it could be found bad and so beginning to establish the facts.
Well, good to take a moment if I may to some instructions from my client. What is very clear however, is the councillor is quite wrong. He said, "I want to take legal advice now" and you dismiss this all. And you then went on to make a decision without consulting any of the parties. So that's what I'm addressing. I appreciate you have an invitation now. It's unclear to me whether or not your mind is open. It is quite clear that one councillor's mind is certainly not open and has made a decision without hearing from any of the parties and convenience, our availability, the suitability or indeed the full submissions on the light point. Because I have a lot to say about the light evidence, which is inherently unreliable, though it seems to have been elevated by you and another example of a yet further predetermination. So if I just may be excused to take instructions from my client, I'd be very grateful. So if we could, I guess once again, leave the council chamber. And I'm very sorry to inconvenience the local residents. I should hopefully take five minutes or so. Thank you.
Of course. I think my colleague councillor Stu will then want to come back.
Yeah, I'm not sure about why you're not suggesting a predetermination. Unless you're referring entirely to the request for a site visit. What are you suggesting?
Marm, I think the animus of the councillor is very clear. What I've requested is that it takes some time to consider the dictat and the decision that you've made to have a site visit without consulting any of the parties for their views as to the propriety of the law and programs of that site visit, the feasibility of the site visit and the relation to the rest of the evidence. So if I can do that, Marm, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Just to clarify, while we had sought legal advice, we did discuss bringing you back in to have a discussion about a site visit. So this is an opportunity for you to make a play now and make a representation and ask us, "Well, tell us why we shouldn't have a site visit." And that's absolutely fine. I think from my point of view, that's absolutely fine. I can be persuaded not to. The reason why I asked for one, why I asked the chair for one is because there was some evidence that was presented to us that could be material to the decision-making process. And that is the light pollution into people's homes, which would be a... that would potentially be a disturbance.
In summary, I think five minutes is granted, is that right, Jack?
Yes.
We have a minute to speak.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your continued patience. So we were at a stage where I think we were sort of questioning, we'd finished with some representations, and there was a discussion. I've got no criticism of that because it's natural for us to have a discussion in this context. Light pollution is raised, and I, in response to a question from your colleagues from our councillor's team, I said, "I don't accept what is being said about light." And that's very rare for me to make such a short comment. You would not be surprised to hear that I have a lot to say about the light evidence, which we have not had an opportunity to say, because we were at the questioning stage in respect of the premises. In due course, when we were ready to arrive to those submissions and so on, it seems to me that the assertions that you've heard about light and light pollution demonstrate how inherently dangerous and unreliable the evidence presented by the local residents in fact is. I was exceptionally surprised to hear, and I heard critically, in a way that perhaps is not shared by everyone in the committee, that Tim Marsh says to you, "I can guarantee that I have witnessed the light pollution coming into the bedroom..." Now, that to me is a great surprise, and should be a great surprise to anyone who's listening to the evidence critically. First and foremost, this site hasn't been built. This site is not operational. The light measures at this site are such, which I've already alluded to, not expanded on because this isn't meant to be a discussion relatively brief. But at 11:00 PM, our lights are dimmed. So there's a difference between lights pre-11:00 PM and post-11:00 PM, once the premises are operational. Secondly, our light fittings are all low lights, pointed downwards. Any assessment of lighting impacts needs to be happening across a range of days and times. They need to be accompanied by an assessment of the ambient light. So if there's lots of lights in the area, that means they're going to have a particular impact. So when I say the evidence about light is reflected to the fears, I think it's far worse actually. The evidence around light is a fantasy and not correct. So to adjourn, to go and visit a building site, where I still need to get permission, clearance, and insurers from all of you, maybe from them and us, costs a great delay in costs. And I have to question the viability of that. I certainly can't get you onsite after 11 o'clock, and there's not going to be any comments, and it's not going to be operational, and it's not going to be complete. You can hopefully understand why I'm quite concerned about coming in and being told, "We're having a site visit," without any submissions. And it's a practical concern to me. And the other issue, of course, is that light pollution generally is admissible. Impacts on people's sleep generally is admissible, and I accept that. However, the specific complaint of one, two, or three residences, as they might be affected by light, and I stress "might" because you've also got the topographical impact to think about, which is that when we're on site, there's fences and there's planting, is such that if the purported nuisance relates to one, two, or three identifiable bedrooms in one, two, or three private properties at most, then we are no longer dealing with a public nuisance, which is concerned about the impact of a nuisance on the general class of emergency subjects, I should also, of course. So for example, a car door slamming has the potential to affect one, two, three, four, or five, because it can remember it. But light in a bedroom can only affect one, two, or three, by the minimum of the private nuisance, and that is completely out with your patrol. If a private nuisance is identified in that way, one of the things that we typically do is often blunder like alcoholism. In fact, I know of one example where some of the residents asked for the same glass window for them, which we did. So there are private solutions to private problems, which of course are not relevant considerations for yourselves. So the submission for light, this effectively is part of my closing speech to you, demonstrates that we're exceptionally compassionate and sympathetic to local residents. We go up and down the country, particularly, Mark, listening to these concerns. And when I say these fears are exaggerated, the idea that opening a McDonald's will somehow ask, create an opportunity for antisocial behaviour, that will act as a magnet to use, that will encourage more races, we've heard many, 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 many times, and it just doesn't happen. And this is why we take a very gentle approach to the analysis of the fears made by the laypeople in a civil setting such as this. But it is entirely possible, as I've done, to demonstrate that it is inherently unlawful and should be pursued. Nonetheless, well, if you and your colleagues are determined to have a site visit, we have to get in touch with the builders because they also have control of the site. We will have to get in touch with the health and safety and undertake a risk assessment. We need to think about the procedure. We're not comfortable allowing members of the public onto the site. We would invite them to stand in their bedroom window and wave at you insofar as that would be appropriate. I don't... Mark and myself would accompany you to mention your own site. We'd ask for legal advice and to be there and see if we can get all of the authorizations. I don't propose to talk to you or explain things to you because that would be unfair. And initially, about the fairness of going onsite when that happened in the absence of the local residents and the optics of that might not work to your advantage. But just thinking of the couple, the few minutes that we had, we think we might be able to arrange it. We think we might be able to arrange it in a very controlled fashion. I'm not sure how much I've said about this, but it will incur costs because you need to read the meeting, we need to read the meeting, but I need to be... we need a further hearing. And if there's not going to be a use to the investigation, then we're concerned about doing that. What you will see during the day in respect of light will be negligible and unhelpful. And what you might see with respect of the planting, the acoustic barriers, and so on and so forth, you may find useful. I'm not sure what more useful it would be than the plans you have already. But our position is that a site visit at this stage, at this time, would probably not assist much. But if that's something that you want, having heard submissions, we will see that arrangement.
Thank you. In that case, it sounds like given that you need to go and speak to people onsite, we will not be able to establish a date today.
I won't take a point on not fixing the date. I won't take a point on not engaging and thinking about my submissions in respect of this. But as I said, it's quite clear that the matter has been predetermined in respect of what I was going to say or not say. At least one of the councillors did promise that they would listen to my submission with an open mind. I don't know when that opportunity is going to be taken.
Thank you. I mean, this is quite unusual case for us. We rarely ask for a site visit. We rarely decide to have one. In my experience, several years, this will be the second site visit. The reason for me asking for it in the first place was to establish further facts that were not only unclear to us because we didn't have the facts for us, that one of the objectives had happened to be had, but also because I thought it would be a good way for us to be sure that that issue is either valid and relevant, or, as you say, just an assertion. I think, I thought from my initial view, that if we had a site visit, we were able to walk around the building, I believe the building's structure is in place. All the different, we were able to walk around the building and follow the path of the car. We would be able to see very clearly, not just where, but also the number of properties that lights may shed into. Presumably, the fencing is already placed, we've heard about that already being in place. So there's no real barrier to prevent us from actually seeing for ourselves in the absence of any other evidence. So my view is still, it could be useful. You've disputed that, and I don't see why... I don't see why we can't sort of recreate the sidelines from this site visit, even though we don't. We can recreate those sidelines and establish the properties that will be affected. It may be that when we get on the side, that isn't really the case, and we can't do that effectively. But we have that site visit. So my view is that we should continue with the site visit, please. And from my own point of view, because obviously we don't do this for half the... apologies for not seeking my views on that first. I have listened to a few, but wouldn't have changed my mind. Thank you.
As David said, we will have to try and fix a date because otherwise we will be in breach. Also, although one gentleman has just left, I'd also like to give you the opportunity to respond to the representations that the people who've come to make objections have made, because you didn't have a chance to do that beforehand. So while we run over the dates that we may be able to adjourn to, if you'd like to respond to anything that the objectors here have said earlier in proceedings, you may...
I have no questions, and I will reserve any further comments until after the site visit, when we're back to include the hearing at whatever date in the future. But thank you.
You're welcome. So we do need to establish a date. I think we are going to... the appetite is to go ahead and look at the site. And as my colleague said, this is evidence of not predetermining an outcome, because if that were the case, we wouldn't need to inconvenience ourselves or anybody else to actually go onsite to see things onsite.
Well, can we have a discussion of practicalities? Obviously, stage ones, we need to work out who's going to go, and then we'll need to get proper clearance, which I think we should be able to get. And obviously, I think site visits and planning and advice is really quite rare, but that's Which properties? You're the ones that are saying you're going to conduct an exercise to establish sidelines. Is it just that you want to go and follow the path and then just rely on what we see? In which case, do you need to involve the local residents? Is it just that you want to see the side, in which case get involved inside and leave you alone, and then perhaps arrange for someone just to walk you around and make sure that you're not talked to or influenced in any way? Or are you going to have questions of residents or us? How do we visit this happening? Because they're so rare. I've only done a few as well, like I've been doing this for over 20 years. So I don't want anyone to appeal on the basis that they don't want it to happen.
As you know, the rules of procedure generally decided by the recommendation, obviously, no questions to anyone. I don't know if there'll be any answers from them. Is that also your view here?
Yes.
I don't know, one of the councillors, this, on the site city, I'm not local, but are you pretty comfortable enough to walk around and say, "Oh, those houses, those look like bedrooms," as I've heard that. Because I guess what I want to avoid is us making an assumption that one is a bedroom that might not be. So actually, no questions or no comment. I'm just playing devil's advocate because I want to make sure it's useful to you as well.
Thank you. Out of our request, it's going to be with us, residents on Clayford Road, and have the properties back home onto this. If we could also visit those properties so that we can see from the other direction as well. Your main view on that, I think it's important to do that as part of this site visit, should they allow us to? I'm saying at least one, Mark.
Well, this is beyond a site visit now. This is a moving piece, isn't it? I mean, this is not helpful, nor does it necessarily have any glory. Because what you're now saying is that you want to go into private premises to which a library of you, I would want a representative of McDonald's or their lawyer access. You want to go into people's private premises, assessing where their bedrooms are, go into their bedrooms, look out of their bedrooms into McDonald's, and then come to a conclusion on what you think are A, the sidelines, and B, the likelihood of light pollution. I don't even know what's apparent with light pollution, but putting that to one side. Now, that part of the site visit is inherently unfair because I have no means of coming onto those properties with you. And so I would object to that very strongly. And in an open, discursive way, I can let you know that in the event you do that, it will be point one on your privileges, whatever the decisions are. Because they're...
Express as long as it's right.
I just think it's that dangerous. And I made that point, to actually protect yourselves as well as everyone involved. And I think that's going too far.
I've not met it before. A site visit is a visit to the site, so it would be unusual. If there is, I know there is a serious objection raised and I'd have planned a site visit just in my opinion.
It's fair to say that we discussed the visit to individual properties as a solution should there not be an opportunity to actually go onsite. So I had time and I can draw that based on what you said and also what David has suggested. However, apologies for that. Members of the public may wish to submit photos that had...
Chair, unfortunately, sorry, I may have gone through the chair. That will be additional data during the course of proceedings, and I believe hearing regulations will need consent from all parties.
I think, I think, councilors, I'm about to anticipate that point. My other concern is actually for residents, because at the moment, where we are on this scenario is that you're having people around, you've got lawyers, you've got evil people from McDonald's watching you, and there's no one watching the residents. How do they know that we're not lobbying or guiding you in a particular way? I'm going to make myself very popular with at least one person. And for what it's worth, I was impressed by, by everyone who's participated, but I thought Mr. Horner was particularly balanced in his representations. I wonder whether he could volunteer, subject to his ability, to kind of be onsite as an observer for the local residents to ensure that we behave, you behave, and we all behave. And we walk around like zombies, not talking to each other, and all kind of looking and behaving appropriately. Because your lawyer must have not done anything to represent residents.
Sorry.
Yes, I'm happy to take a site visit. I'm retired, so I'm free every day, so that isn't a problem, is it?
I'm really grateful, and sorry for picking on you. I'd hope you might be tired. But just before you're walking around, Mal, and a basic question might arise. It might be quite appropriate to answer for the most part, which I'm not, not to talk to you. And then you come back to the council chamber and say, "They said this. It does not play well for your local residents." It is important that all parties feel fairness. So if we have someone from the local residents, that will give everyone some protection and hopefully some comfort. Thank you. I'm just trying to think if there's anything on the date. Is there a particular suitable timing for the date, or...
We need to discuss this, and obviously then invite people back in to discuss this with you as well because it has to be mutually convenient date. I know everybody, most of us are probably very busy. It's Friday the 26th of September, in other words, one week's time too soon.
You've probably heard that. Oh, sorry, okay. Mal's not able to make any calls because there was a balance, we'd have to arrange that. Yes, I can provision that too. How does 11am sound for the scene when we get all the organisations and the...
11am, unless anyone's going to stop me, sounds ideal for that site visit on the 26th.
Can I just, maybe just get a list, because we'll probably need names, won't we? So obviously, the councillors. There you go. Do we need your committed power democratic services?
Yes, if that's okay. Yep.
Okay, so we're going to take everyone's name and contact details. Do you need your licensing officer?
If maybe there'll be no questions. If maybe I'm available, I'm not sure what input I can on the site.
I can't think of any, so I'm just sort of thinking off the cuff in a way, trying to be powerful. But I don't think so.
I think that I'm required, and I'm happy to attend.
I just wonder whether it's appropriate to not have a representative of the licensing authority as part of the decision makers there, just in terms of transparency.
I'm happy to attend, Chair.
Is that sensible?
Thank you.
From the viewpoint of...
No, I don't believe it. No. I don't, my previous experience on any of these wasn't helpful, so okay, there you go. Join the ant. So if we could take a list of all those contacts, and the best way to contact you, we can arrange for that to be confirmed. And then what, do we have a date for the reconvened hearing?
If we could then reconvene the afternoon of the site visit, then that would be ideal. So in other words, site visit at 11am and then straight back to City Hall to reconvene the meeting that we adjourned today. Does that make sense?
That definitely pays costs, doesn't it, for that site to carry on? Thank you.
So I think all that remains for us to do then is to provide you the list of all the contacts, take it from there. Once we've done that, then I'll close this meeting, unless I'm just looking at David, is there anything else David wants to say?
Sure, I suggest we do contact details after the meeting, just because this is...
Contact details after the meeting, okay. Thank you. In that case, I will now close the meeting in order that we take those contact details for the new date, 26th of September.